Folks, gather around for this very exciting occasion. So for those of you who don't know, my name is David Mitchell. I'm the mayor of the town of Bridgewater. And I am super excited to be here. I know this has been a long time coming. We wanted to do this many years ago. There's some complications. You can all call the province in your MLA and get them to update the traffic standards. That makes it so these aren't illegal. But you know, between Steve and our staff, we found a solution on, you know, a very busy intersection, very highly prominent, which is what we want too. But I just want to convey that this is more than just, you know, painting some colors on the road. You all know that. It's the town's way of publicly demonstrating to everyone that this is a safe, respectful, inclusive community where everyone deserves to be treated with love. And I know for many of you, it doesn't feel like that. So I fielded a few calls. Why are you doing this? Why are you spending the money? Well, because some people don't have the luxury of just walking around, being exactly who they want to be, a full, true expression of themselves without someone judging, hurting them. We don't have to go down all... You know. So this is just a small thing that the town can do to express that this is everyone's community, regardless of who you are, how you identify, whatever it is. This is your community. And so we are privileged to be able to do this. So I do want to thank Lunberg Pride and our staff team for working together. And I look forward to the parade that's coming next month, our first Pride Parade. Town Council will be there with all of you. And so, you know, better things are ahead. And I'll turn it over.
Jeez, now I gotta try not to cry. Thank you. No, I mean, like you said, this is a... It's a small gesture in the grand scheme of things, but it really means a lot more than just paint on a road. I know people here are part of the LGBTQ+ community. They're allies here. And the climate that we're currently living in, where there is a lot of betrayal and attacks on LGBTQ folks, especially trans people and trans women. You know, when... Especially when we have the events in Bridgewater next month, this will show to them that it's more than just paint. You know, this is a town that is welcome and inclusive to anyone, no matter the minority that comes out and tries to speak out against us because, you know, we're not going anywhere. And it truly means a lot to me that we've worked through all the ups and downs with the rules and found a way to make it work because it's so important that we have a crosswalk in Bridgewater, especially now that Bridgewater is growing and it's going to grow in the coming years. So I just want to thank everyone who came out. And this is wonderful that it happens to be in place before Pride Week next month. So I hope that anytime you're around here, whether it's during Pride Week or not, that you'll remember this very important day. And, you know, we will just keep staying positive despite all the reasons we have not to be. So thanks, everybody.
I'm Amanda Fancy. I'm the dealer-owner of Gauze Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location. So, you know, we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location. You know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits. But it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here. And I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some, you know, strong investment opportunities for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Conservatory of Music. So this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal. So I'm like, you know, I'm trying... I make new friends. I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother. His wife is like my sister. So, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum. But I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine to Two Athletics. I found the opportunity. Started this gym in my parents' garage. And now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears. You don't put earbuds in and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger. And a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home. And there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
Folks, gather around for this very exciting occasion. So for those of you who don't know, my name is David Mitchell. I'm the mayor of the town of Bridgewater. And I am super excited to be here. I know this has been a long time coming. We wanted to do this many years ago. There's some complications. You can all call the province in your MLA and get them to update the traffic standards. That makes it so these aren't illegal. But, you know, between Steve and our staff, we found a solution on, you know, a very busy intersection, very highly prominent, which is what we want too. But I just want to convey that this is more than just, you know, painting some colors on the road. You all know that. It's the town's way of publicly demonstrating to everyone that this is a safe, respectful, inclusive community where everyone deserves to be treated with love. And I know for many of you, it doesn't feel like that. So I fielded a few calls. Why are you doing this? Why are you spending the money? Well, because some people don't have the luxury of just walking around, being exactly who they want to be, a full, true expression of themselves without someone judging, hurting them. We don't have to go down all... You know. So this is just a small thing that the town can do to express that this is everyone's community, regardless of who you are, how you identify, whatever it is. This is your community. And so we are just... We are privileged to be able to do this. So I do want to thank Lunberg Pride and our staff team for working together. And I look forward to the parade that's coming next month, our first Pride Parade. Town Council will be there with all of you. And so, you know, better things are ahead. And I'll turn it over.
Jeez, now I gotta try not to cry. Thank you. No, I mean, like you said, this is a... It's a small gesture in the grand scheme of things, but it really means a lot more than just paint on a road. I know people here are part of the LGBTQ+ community. They're allies here. And the climate that we're currently living in, where there is a lot of betrayal and attacks on LGBTQ folks, especially trans people and trans women. You know, when... Especially when we have the events in Bridgewater next month, this will show to them that it's more than just paint. You know, this is a town that is welcome and inclusive to anyone, no matter the minority that comes out and tries to speak out against us because, you know, we're not going anywhere. And it truly means a lot to me that we've worked through all the ups and downs with the rules and found a way to make it work because it's so important that we have a crosswalk in Bridgewater, especially now that Bridgewater is growing and it's going to grow in the coming years. So I just want to thank everyone who came out. And this is wonderful that it happens to be in place before Pride Week next month. So I hope that anytime you're around here, whether it's during Pride Week or not, that you'll remember this very important day. And, you know, we will just keep staying positive despite all the reasons we have not to be. So thanks, everybody.
I'm Amanda Fancy. I'm the dealer-owner of Gauze Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location. So, you know, we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location. You know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits. But it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about...
Good evening, everyone. I will call this regularly scheduled meeting a Bridgewater Town Council order. And we are once again coming live from the Bridgewater Fire Hall as council chambers is undergoing some renovations. So we anticipate that we will be back in Town Hall for our next meeting. But if we're not, we will, of course, publicly announce it and probably be here. So just stay tuned. Just a reminder, the town of Bridgewater is located in McMoggi, the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. And it is our privilege to be here. In terms of announcements, I have a couple of proclamations. And these proclamations are on the town's website. So you can see those and they'll be shared on social media. So Right to Know Week in Nova Scotia is September 25th, October 1st. And that just is proclaiming citizens' right to access information as part of the Municipal Government Act. And the other is that September is Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Awareness Month. And that, again, that is for the whole month of September. And both these proclamations will be on the town's website and shared on social media. Are there any other announcements from members of council? Councilor Burr?
I've got two or three worship. And I represented the town yesterday at the Lunberg Fishes Memorial Service. And it was awesome, but very emotional because this year, they read off the names that ended in three. And there's 56 names read. And there's a lot of columns there of fishermen that lost their lives. But this particular one was the Osprey. I think it was in January. And we lost six members off of that crew. And one of the survivors was there. They had a few comments. It was very emotional. I was very pleased to represent the town. And it was very moving for anybody that attended. The second thing is the Battle of Britain Legion is going to be having a service on September the 17th to mark the 85th anniversary of the Battle of Britain. The band will be there. The cadet corps will be there. There's planned a flyover of the third tire. And it's going to take place at Veterans Memorial Park at 1:00 PM. And the Battle of Britain ceremony is just to pay tribute to the first significant defeat of the Germans during World War II. The several members of the Class 24 were aptly involved in that battle. So we encourage the public to join as we mark this very important anniversary. And this other one, I guess it's just for council, but I'll read it. EPR and PPP, NSFM has been advocating for that for a couple of years. The provincial government has passed a legislation. We're looking at probably two, two and a half years to let the manufacturers take responsibility for the packaging, which will mean millions of dollars to the province of Nova Scotia and therefore money to all the municipalities within that problem. But they are going to have online presentations on September the 20th at 4:00 PM and September the 27th at 4:00 PM. So anybody who wants to join in and get a little update, what's happening, please join in that presentation. That's it.
Great. Thank you very much. Yesterday was the Family Fun Day at the LCLC. And, I mean, it was hot. It was very, very hot. I think with what the original forecast was for rain and then the heat, a lot of people went to the beach. But those that attended had a great time. So thanks to all the staff from the LCLC and the town of Bridgewater that put that event on. And music was fantastic. I stayed for a bit and enjoyed some of that. Coming on Saturday, September 23rd, is our Harvest Moon Music Festival downtown. So lots of performers, lots of great local talent. So that's sort of the day. But also, the Canada fireworks that was postponed due to weather will be on that day. So that's exciting news and obviously weather permitting. But second time's the charm probably for the fireworks. So fingers crossed. And yeah, so just check out the town's social media feeds and website for the lineup of activities. And there'll be some street closures in effect as well. So for the fireworks especially. So just make note of that. Is there anything else from council? Okay, nearing none. I do see that our delegation is here. So Matt Delorme is here to talk about the South Shore Sustainability Summit, which is next week. So welcome, Matt. And I will turn the floor over to you.
Hey.
Hello. Good evening.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yep.
But you can't see me. Not sure why that is, but that's okay because I'm going to share my screen anyway. So just going to share here. So I have a very quick presentation to go over, mainly about the Friday event, to just give you an idea of what's happening there, the exciting things that have been going on and where it's all leading to. So again, this is funded by the Municipal Asset Management Program through FCM and funded by the Government of Canada. And just as a reminder to you all, AIM Network, we're a not-for-profit organization. We provide training, education, and technical assistance for asset management in Atlantic Canada. And that includes things like preparing for climate change and looking at natural assets, which are a big part of this project. I'm Matt Delorme. I presented to you before, so I won't go into great detail about that. So the main purpose of the project is really looking at where we are in the modern age. Infrastructure management's changing. Canada has a new focus with the National Adaptation Strategy. Along with climate change, we also have aging infrastructure. So we need to balance those two things on where we invest money and how we really manage risks. Part of that is thinking about how natural assets factor into reducing the costs of built infrastructure management and reducing risks in terms of the way of how nature functions so that we can build a little more smartly and reduce our risk, essentially so we can build things within funding constraints while still taking advantage of population growth and adapting to demographic changes. So clearly, the solution to this is long-term planning, which means we have to take a broader view than we usually have in the past, looking forward decades instead of, you know, months or years. So another big piece of that is making sure that we have community consultation involvement because one thing we're certain of is there's going to be some really hard choices to make. And we want to make sure that you folks, as council members, really have that temperature of your community so that the decisions that you're making are well-received and well-accepted by people in the community. And essentially, we're trying to balance what costs we need with risks and service delivery. So the first day of our summit here is actually a formal political summit. It's only for staff and council. We're not expecting any decisions to be made there. So it doesn't have to be something... We just want to get people in the room talking with each other. So it's not something where we need, you know, formal debate and formal decision-making. But it's split into two parts. The morning is going to be on how natural assets contribute to your services. So we've been working along, along with organizing this summit, we've been building something that's actually brand-new in Canada, which is defined natural asset level of service delivery. So there's some guidelines out there, but it hasn't really been put into practice. So you're really leading the country in doing this. And in fact, I've been talking to Canadian Standards Association about taking this and moving it forward into further pilots so that what the work you're doing here is actually going to start to form some of the foundation for Canadian standards eventually. It also recognizes that future communities are going to look different than they do now. Less reliance on built infrastructure and more integration nature in terms of how we deliver municipal services. It's also going to impact land use, zoning, and how you're going to bring new people into the community because we're seeing that in Nova Scotia. We're getting demographic changes. We're getting increases in population. And we need to think about these things because it's a bit of a new situation for Nova Scotia. So as I said there, we've got this definition of how we look at levels of service and how we assess risk so that you're able to make decisions like, should we be protecting the shoreline? Or should we be upgrading pumps at our wastewater treatment plant? Or should we be repairing the leaking public works building roof? So we're going to give a presentation to you and get your feedback on it because it is new on how we're approaching all of that. The afternoon is actually going to be really exciting too. So as we went through this project, we found out... We initially wanted to come in and encourage regional cooperation. We found out that you're actually doing a fantastic job with it already with the Joint Services Board, EMO, Building Inspection Accessibility. They're going to come in and tell you a bit about what's been working and what hasn't. And then we're going to move into a workshop to see where you can take those lessons and expand into some other areas, some of which you're seeing up here. Well, we'd also love to hear your input on areas you might think that we could go with it. This is an agenda in the interest of time. I'm not going to go through this in detail because I'm going to send you some formal communication about that in the next day, actually, that has this full agenda on it. The second day is public engagement. Really, we want to make sure that there's some council representation there so you can hear community feedback on these difficult decisions like land use, coastal protection questions, should you be doing infrastructure upgrades or planning for emergency response, and also preparing for projects under the new adaptation strategy because your seeking funding is going to be a completely different world now because everything's going to start needing a climate lens to it. We're also looking to have that commitment to addressing climate-related risks. You know, the punchline here is that you have to do that if you want to secure federal and provincial funding in the future. It's also a great place. We've got a ton of industry and NGO exhibitors coming there. We're up to about 35 of them. So it's a great place to get all of them networking and also you talking to them about what everyone's up to in your community. We're doing a public survey, actually based on your energized Bridgewater format so that we can get you lots of good information from people at that conference on what the temperature in your community is. And ultimately, what we want to do is really increase people's education and engagement around climate issues because we have to have an engaged public in order to make these tough decisions. So outcomes here, we're going to have the defined levels of service, projected costs related to at least one critical natural asset. But most importantly, your staff is going to have the process ready to keep doing that indefinitely into the future. Same thing with the risk assessment. How do you compare natural to built assets? That doesn't exist right now. You're going to have it. Built with tools, templates, and a roadmap. Everything that AIM does is open source and free to municipalities. So the foundation you're laying here is going to be available to municipalities across Canada. We're also hoping from the Friday to have a roadmap of actions to expand that regional cooperation. And then those resident surveys from the Sustainability Summit. So I think I went a little bit over the five minutes I intended. I apologize for that. But I will open it up to see if you have any questions for me.
Any questions from members of council?
We're really hoping to see you all out there. One thing that I did leave out that you would see on the Facebook page is there is a Friday night event at Perkins Science, which is sort of good news storytelling, what good stuff's going on in the community if you want to come out for that, too. That's sort of the recreational part of the summit.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate your time. And if you have any questions that come up later, don't hesitate to reach out.
Thanks, Matt. All right, moving on to our agenda, we've got the minutes from August eighth, special council meeting, and the August fourteenth, regular council meeting. Any errors or omissions proposed? Hearing none, cap of motion approved. Counsel Tanner, seconded by Counsel McDonald. All those in favor? Motion secured. Thank you. And we are down to planning and application, withdrawal of municipal planning strategy amendments, flood mitigation requirements for the La Haye River Development Agreement, our development area, I guess. So McKenzie, is that you?
Yeah. My own presentation, I hope for this, I will just speak really quickly.
Yeah, perfect. And so I should probably just, in case anyone in the public saw this on the agenda or is asking questions, we are not not doing flood mitigation for the town. Like, I know flood mitigation is on the community's mind, but you're going to explain this is for a property and it's because they have another solution.
Yeah, and I can touch on that, too.
Okay. I just don't want anyone confused by why is the town of Bridgewater withdrawing from flood mitigation? We are not.
Yeah, no, so this is for a specific property. We received an application in 2022 on behalf of Black Bay Real Estate Group to look at options to amend the municipal planning strategy to ensure that policy that's regarding flood mitigation isn't overly restrictive. And this came about from their application of three eighty-eight King Street for a development agreement. So since that application, they found solutions that worked for them and council approved that development agreement. So the application to amend the M P S says no law are needed, so that has been withdrawn. But yeah, staff are now working on engaging consultants to continue work on flood risk and amendments in a few different ways right now. And so that will also look at municipal planning strategy amendments.
Any questions or comments from members of council? Okay, down to, where we down to? Four forty King, application? Yeah, application for development agreement.
Great, thank you. So this is an initiation presentation for proposed amendments for the municipal planning strategy to expand residential permissions in the historic downtown commercial zone or the C one zone. So staff received an application to construct two-story building containing a bar, a restaurant, and a single-unit dwelling at four forty King Street. The proposed building would be thirty-two hundred square feet and the property is approximately forty-four hundred square feet. A development agreement is required for this application because the property is located in the La Haye River Development Agreement area, so there's extra policies to look at there. And to enable a development agreement, an M P S amendment would be required. And this is because currently, single and two-unit dwellings aren't permitted on King Street, even if they're above a commercial use. So this application is to amend the municipal planning strategy to permit single and two-unit residential development in the C one zone when the ground-floor commercial building frontage is occupied by a commercial use and more than fifty percent of the ground-floor area is used for commercial purposes, as well as enabling land use bylaw amendments and then therefore enabling the development agreement specifically at four forty King Street. But this presentation is focused on the M P S amendments. So the C one zone is the traditional commercial center of town and it offers a range of retail, professional uses and services and residential. And the C one zone is shown in, it's a little off-color here, but in pink along the river. And four forty King Street is specifically outlined in black there, which is, and it's located directly beside Bidgeon Wiskapark, for context. So the C one zone permits a wide range of uses. It permits multi-unit residential development where the ground-floor building frontage is occupied by commercial use and more than fifty percent of the ground-floor area is used for commercial purposes. It also permits standalone two-unit dwellings on streets outside of King Street, but it doesn't permit single or two-unit dwellings with commercial on the ground floor anywhere in the C one zone. So the proposed amendments would then permit single and two-unit dwellings in the C one zone when there is existing ground-floor commercial, or sorry, when those existing ground-floor commercial requirements are followed. And these amendments would not permit standalone single-unit dwellings in the C one zone. They would also not permit standalone two-unit dwellings on King Street or any other residential on King Street without that commercial ground floor. So staff have completed an initial policy assessment, but a full policy analysis would be completed for the planning analysis report and staff would explore what those amendments would look like. The town's policy requires ground-floor commercial, which intends to activate the downtown streetscape, so the type of residential above wouldn't really affect this. A variety of residential types can provide options to meet people's needs and preferences, requiring multi-unit residential development. Instead of permitting single and two units above commercial might result in taller buildings on smaller lots, which we see downtown. There is also existing single and two-unit dwellings on King Street above commercial already, so the changes would be in line with existing buildings. And overall, policy focuses on mixing compatible land uses, compact development, developing a range of housing options, and improving built form. So overall, it goes within those themes, but staff will look at that more in-depth for the planning analysis report. So staff recommend that town council direct staff to work on the requested M P S amendments to expand residential permissions, and staff would then concurrently work on the application for four forty King Street for the development agreement.
Any questions from council? Counsel Ober.
This is sort of an aside from the issue at hand, but related. So I think this proposed development would have public water access. So would there have staff discussed or would you discuss extending Bidgeon Wiskapark down in that direction?
There's been conversations about that at the application stage. The applicant or the developer is interested in that. So since we're kind of focused on the M P S amendments at this point, we haven't got into any further conversations or exploration about that, but that is something that we want to look at because they're nearly connected now.
Yeah, okay. Other questions or comments? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Dorber, thank you.
I would move that town council, town of Bridgewater, direct staff to begin the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw amendments process to permit single and two-unit residential development as well as multi-unit residential development in the historic downtown commercial C one zone when the ground-floor building frontage is occupied by a commercial use and more than fifty percent of the ground-floor area is used for commercial purposes.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Kofflin. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion secured. Thank you. We're down to three sixty-one Victoria Road, application for M P S amendments to enable concurrent land use bylaw amendments, initial report.
Good evening, Council Mayor. I'm here for speaking about three sixty-one application, proposed municipal planning strategy amendment, which is about re-designation from commercial to residential. Staff received an application requesting amendments to the municipal planning strategy or M P S to re-designate the property from general commercial to low-density residential at three sixty-one Victoria Road. Consequently, the proposed application also requests amendment to the land use bylaw or L U B to facilitate a rezoning from the general commercial or C five zone to the two-unit residential or R two zone. The application is requesting a change in zoning to accommodate the conversion of the existing commercial use to a residential use. The property at three sixty-one Victoria Road is currently located in the general commercial zone, and it is designated as general commercial on the future land use map of the municipal planning strategy of which facilitates the general commercial zone. Residential uses are now permitted in the C five zone. This is the context map that shows the subject property, which is located on Victoria Road close to the town boundary. The lot is five hundred forty-seven square feet, which equals fifty-point-eight square meters in area. The subject property is designated as general commercial on the future land use map of the M P S, which facilitates the general commercials or C five zone prior to the existing commercial use. The building was used as a single-unit dwelling. In two thousand twenty-one, the single-unit dwelling was converted to commercial. The intention of changing from residential to commercial was to operate the business as the tropical house plant shop. The applicant is pursuing the property's re-designation and rezoning for residential purposes with the primary goal of facilitating itself. As shown on this map, the property is adjacent to properties in the general commercial or C five zone, illustrated by the pink color, and near properties in the comprehensive residential R three colored by dark yellow. And near properties in the comprehensive residential or R three colored by dark yellow, yeah, by dark yellow, two-unit residential or R two with the light yellow, and single-unit residential or R one zones, cream color highlighted. The present land uses for the two properties abiding the subject property are a funeral home and parking lot. And these two properties, as displayed on this zoning map, are located in the general commercial or C five zone. A rezoning to two-unit residential or R two could not proceed if the property is not re-designated. The subject rezoning request can only be enabled through a re-designation to low-density residential in accordance with displayed future land use map of the municipal planning strategy. The designation of the property and the surrounding properties can be seen on this map. The general commercial designation identifies all lands which are highlighted brown color on this map that are intended for a broad range of commercial development along or close to major arterial streets in Bridgewater, outside the downtown core. To enable a map amendment to the zoning map, the first step is to re-designate the property on the future land use map. And to allow single and two-unit developments, the most appropriate designation to pursue is the low-density residential designation, which are colored in white yellow. The low-density residential designation includes two zones, single-unit residential R one and two-unit residential R two. Conversely, the general commercial designation includes three zones, which are urban commercial zone C three, group commercial zone C four, and general commercial zone C five. Rezoning to R two would then permit a single-unit or two-unit dwelling. Considering this property is currently designated general commercial, an amendment to the future land use policy map, or map two of the municipal planning strategy, is required for council to consider the request to rezon to two-unit residential zone. A full policy analysis would be completed for the planning analysis report and staff would explore what the amendments could look like. Staff have identified this recommended option for town council to consider direct staff to work on the requested map amendment to the future land use map of the municipal planning strategy to enable a map amendment to the zoning map of the land use bylaw to facilitate the rezoning to two-unit residential or R two zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? No? Straightforward? Okay. Someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel McDonald.
I would move the town council for the town of Bridgewater, direct staff to initiate the requested municipal planning strategy amendment to re-designate the property at three sixty-one Victoria Road in the form of a map amendment to the future land use map, from the current general commercial designation to the low-density residential designation, including concurrent land use bylaw amendments.
All right, thank you. Seconded by Counsel Kofflin. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion secured. Great, thank you. Down six point four, wastewater system capacity constraints and M P S amendments. You get the fun one.
Yes. Okay, good evening. Yeah, this is a big topic. So staff are seeking council's direction to proceed with municipal planning strategy amendments and as well land use bylaw amendments to place conditions on as-of-right development that necessitates a new sanitary service connection within the town. At a discussion session on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, staff received direction to investigate policy options and more specifically, the creation of a holding zone in areas of known wastewater capacity issue. The stop originates from concern due to the growing amount of information we have with respect to the physical pipe capacities within the wastewater collection system, which relates to sanitary sewers and combined sanitary and storm sewers, and the town's ability to permit growth without an assessment of wastewater systems, considering the current development pace and the current collection system capacity constraints. These proposed amendments concentrate on as-of-right development, which would necessitate new or larger wastewater sewer connections. As-of-right development means permit issuance at the discretion of the development officer. There may be conditions attached to that approval, such as in the site plan approval process, but in no case does that review contemplate the adequacy downstream of our wastewater collection system. Then there's the development agreement process, which is at the discretion of council and includes consideration of whether there is adequate capacity, so developments permitted by the development agreement process are covered. However, all other development that is permitted as-of-right is presently not. When staff approached council on May fifteenth, the options presented were mostly formed on the establishment and maintenance of a map. However, the capacity constraint issue is very complex and extremely fluid. New information is obtained regularly through development proposals, mostly through the development agreement process now. Staff suggested a static map is not the ideal solution as a map of the municipal planning strategy would require a formal amendment with every change or realization. Therefore, staff agree that a map showing areas of known wastewater capacity constraints is not the most favorable path forward. In the revised approach, as detailed in the staff report, in lieu of a map, the idea is to create new conditions for as-of-right development that would apply townwide. The land use bylaw regulation and enabling policy of the municipal planning strategy would need to be very clear in describing in which situations the additional conditions would apply. Firstly, does the development need a new or larger service connection? Then, staff would have to make a determination on whether or not a downstream assessment is necessary. For example, if the town already has the necessary data, staff can determine whether a new or larger connection can be granted with that information at hand. First step is to obtain council direction to begin the policy analysis and investigation on how to create new policy most effectively in the municipal planning strategy. The municipal planning strategy provides the future vision for the town through statements of policy, and then it's the land use bylaw that provides the tools to achieve it. The land use bylaw is the principal mechanism for implementing the land use policies of the municipal planning strategy. So those policies, and in this case, proposed policies, must clearly outline intention and provide enough information for, to support the provisions in the land use bylaw. Now, staff have formed preliminary amendments that, subject to council direction this evening, will be further analyzed, potentially augmented, together with the town's engineering department before coming back to council. The underlying goal of the proposed amendments is to regulate development in a manner to not further exacerbate wastewater capacity issues while still enabling growth where capacity is available. To date, we are also considering a permission that, without conditions, where building lots already serviced with properly sized laterals are allowed to, or would be granted permission for development. To accomplish this, as mentioned, the proposed approach is to require the downstream wastewater capacity assessments for all development, regardless of type and zone, where new and larger service connection is necessary to accommodate that development and use. Again, presently in our thinking, existing lots with appropriately sized services stuffed with the property line and ready for connection would be excluded. The natural exemptions become those lots already serviced, so infill opportunity not needing upsized sanitary services, residential conversions to add a secondary unit, accessory or backyard dwelling units where the accessory structure cannot be further subdivided to be on a separate lot, home-based businesses, and overall, any change of use, including commercial instances, where a larger sanitary service is not required. These exemptions consider developments such as infill, conversions, and accessory structures used to incrementally increase residential density. The proposed amendments to the municipal planning strategy... The proposed amendments to the municipal planning strategy would include new policy background under section fifteen municipal infrastructure regarding adequacy of sanitary services, in addition to new policy statements to enable a new regulation in the land use bylaw. The policy would make the evaluation of wastewater capacity a requirement for any development that includes a new or larger sanitary sewer connection, including those developments permitted as-of-right. Policy would also clarify that any evaluation would be the responsibility of the developer where necessary information is not available from the town. Town engineer would have authority and discretion on the provision of any new or larger service connections, and that decision would be made in consideration of available wastewater collection system capacity at the time of development permit issuance or application. Like the municipal planning strategy, clarity within the land use bylaw is very important. We want the public to know what conditions exist for development. In this case, regulations repeated in a few locations and made to stand out is the key. The proposed amendments to the land use bylaw would include new regulation under the general provisions to introduce the requirement for any development that includes a newer, larger sanitary sewer connection to be assessed with submission requirements incorporated. Staff would propose an asterisk with regulation above the permitted developments of each zone and new provision under the special requirements sections of each zone in addition to the general provision to confirm and clarify that any development that includes a newer or larger sanitary sewer connection shall be assessed and approved in consideration of available wastewater collection system capacity at the time of development permit application. And we have some other considerations for council. First and foremost, the amendments proposed are intended to be interim in nature. Also, the development charges project is crucial to this work and the larger conversation of the goal of reducing the risk of developing both residential commercial properties and Bridgewater. Not only will the town have a full wastewater system model for a complete picture of constraints or opportunities, but we will be able to derive a cost contribution model to facilitate cost-sharing arrangements for infrastructure upgrades. Development charges project should take two to three years to completion. It is presently being re-scoped and is a priority for staff. Assessments being completed as part of the development charges project will assist in identifying system upgrades for further capital project discussion. More immediately, staff will be investigating an interim capital cost contribution policy to help direct staff when the town receives requests to upgrade wastewater infrastructure, not currently included in the ten-year capital program, to support developments that cannot proceed without those infrastructure improvements. Additionally, the, the review of the town's planning documents is scheduled to restart in twenty twenty-four. That process will take approximately three, four years to completion, and in consideration of the fully modeled wastewater system, planning policy, and enabled development regulation to be aligned in a manner to manage the wastewater capacity, capacity constraints and growth most effectively. Plan review can also examine other ways to mitigate concern with wastewater capacity. So the proposed wastewater-related amendments should be designed to exist until plan review is completed. So that is recommended that council, direct staff, to begin the process of amending the municipal planning strategy to enable amendments to the land use bylaw in a manner similar to those described.
Questions from council? Councilor Kaufman?
Have prospective developers who would maybe impacted by this been consulted or will they be consulted?
They will be consulted. That, that part of the process hasn't commenced, so this evening we're looking for direction to, to begin and, and then there will be a, a process to engage stakeholders. Staff will discuss a little bit more how that comes together, but the idea is to, is to consult as much as possible.
Questions or comments? And Councilor Thorburn?
And would it be fair to say, based on your experience and knowledge of the situation, that we know now where we can build and where we have capacity not to build within the town boundaries?
We don't know enough.
You don't know enough?
We have some information. This development charges, infrastructure charges project is crucial to, to augmenting that information. So we have a, we'll say a theoretical view of where development can occur, but we need more concrete data to, to help inform those decisions with any certainty. And that's why we need the downstream assessments, although theoretical in nature, they are a good step forward. We need that development charges project and the modeling of our systems to take place, and that is, that is the importance of that project, and that will give us a clear picture.
Okay. Thank you, Nick. Appreciate it.
I think it's important to point out, this is not an easy or quick solution, and, and you've articulated that quite well, Nick, that this, you know, just based on the length of time it's going to take to kind of get us to where we need to go. And I, I often talk to people who are almost in disbelief, like, how did you get here? How didn't you know? But I think people need to remember that, you know, while Bridgewater grew every year, we grew with like a dozen single-family units. Maybe we had a great year and we might have had twenty single-family units. And then the last number of years, it's literally been multi-unit with hundreds proposed. Like just drive around Bridgewater and see new buildings that, you know, five years ago that weren't there, and now there's one next to another, next to another with more proposed. So that changes everything. So, you know, for years, we kind of mapped out our steady growth, and I had someone say, well, why, why didn't you just oversize all the pipes? We talked about this today. You can't just oversize pipes, not only because it would be huge cost that you might not ever, you know, realize, but also it affects what's in the pipe and its movement. So you can't just go and put the biggest pipe you can buy on the ground everywhere because that has, you know, a huge negative impact on other things. And so it's important that we do this in a, in a calculated way, and it might be some short-term pain. We already know we have, because of our lack of separation of storm and wastewater and rainfall like we had today, that, you know, ten years ago, you'd say that would happen once every ten years, and now it happens like once every ten days. So, you know, that just compounds everything. So I just, we need to make sure that everyone understands that this is not an easy fix, but we, if we don't do it right, then fast forward ten years, we'll just be having this conversation again, and we'll have to do it all over again. So the staff are working hard to make sure that we do this in a way that our growth can continue to be managed, but we're not overspending where we don't need to, and we're not underspending like we, you know, have for probably fifty years. So trying to turn the ship around in the, in the best way possible. Now, any other questions? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Kaufman?
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to begin the municipal planning strategy amendment process to enable amendments to the land use bylaw in a manner similar to those outlined in document number twenty-two, twenty-three dash zero seven seven B.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Thorburn. All those in favor? Dis opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. We go down to business arising, unfinished business, pedestrian crossing at Vino Bridge. So for those who aren't familiar, as Mr. Davidson comes to forward, Vino Bridge runs parallel to King Street. It's just, just past Fancy Pants, just as you go up King Street. People will remember, it just opened a little while ago after the flood in July twenty-first, and so our engineer is going to explain now what, what we have to do.
Thank you. So yes, great, great start there to this discussion. For, for those that know, it just opened. Staff are currently working on rerouting the essential services that previously went across the pedestrian bridge, that would be water and sewer. We're hoping that will be done sometime in October. But so part of this work is relative or related to that pedestrian bridge being removed. But now we can focus our attention on pedestrian access. So staff, we're looking at our options that exist there. So we, we understand those that we've reviewed to date would be creating a pathway that's on private property, following the rerouting of the essential services, putting in a pedestrian across that, the river, the brook itself. Then we have the other options of putting a temporary access bridge. I was shocked that they make them that large, but I guess they're, they're out there. And then also looking at repurposing the existing Vino Bridge, making it one-way, or sorry, making it two-way traffic, one lane, and creating a, a pathway on the bridge. So after looking at those ones, certainly staff wouldn't advise to have public entry on private property for safety, security, as well as if we did construct a pedestrian bridge on that private property where the banks are susceptible to erosion. Next with it, the, putting, putting the pedestrian bridge in a very large one comes to about a hundred thousand dollar cost, a little bit more, because there are earthworks to do, as well as we have to wait for the existing pedestrian bridge to be removed. And the other one would be installing temporary traffic lights on either side of Vino Bridge, creating a one-way, or creating it one-lane, sorry, one-way. And that would be the most cost-effective option and the shortest period to put that in place. So staff are recommending to an unbudget expenditure for the emergency work for the traffic lights, estimated cost of seventy-five thousand dollars, with the final cost of the above noted items to be funded from the undesignated operating reserves, and the council authorized the procurement of the above noted work, section pursuant to section eighteen point one A, policy seventy-nine, purchasing and tendering for alternative procurement.
And, and just for clarification, if we, we get those lights, those can be used in future for other projects?
Right now, we're looking at renting them. So depending on what the cost is, rent them to divide them. So we'll, right now, we have the, the estimates based on renting them because I think that's the most expensive price, that's why we've looked at that way. But we will look at, see if we can purchase them and then reuse them for other projects as well.
Yeah. For me, it's, it's a safety issue. Right now, there's no pedestrian access, so anyone walking to Parkview, for example, or walking to Freshbets has to go all the way up to York Street and across and all the way down. My guess is that they're not going to do that, which means they're then going to walk on the, on the Vino Bridge, which is going to have traffic going both ways. So for, just for safety reasons, it, it makes sense to, to at least provide safe pathway. I don't know if council has questions. Councilor Kaufman?
So will a permanent pedestrian crossing be included on the new bridge? And the province will bear that cost? Is that correct?
Well, that, that has been negotiated, will not be during the construction agreement for the new bridge and the services, but those will be funded by the town itself.
Yeah, we've had it in our capital plan to, to look at the construction of that because typically that's the problem with the position is with the sidewalks, they don't do pedestrian sidewalks on bridges or roads. So it would be the town's responsibility.
It's probably similar to the overpass and exit twelve A where they put in the overpass, but if we wanted sidewalks, we could.
And would this, would the cost associated with this be eligible for disaster relief funding in the future?
We will be, we're, we're tabulating all of our costs related to replacing infrastructure or repairing infrastructure, so this will go in that. Yeah.
Just a couple more questions. Can you explain the, I mean, obviously traffic would be slower in that area going down in one lane, but any other potential impacts? It's not that far away from busy intersection?
We've looked at the options. You know, we, we feel that from an accessibility perspective, a protected walkway for the pedestrians themselves using the concrete barriers, we can still maintain it with our existing equipment, but impacts to the intersections, yes, it will be slower. We anticipate driver habits may change, but necessarily we can't direct staff, direct where public will go. Chances are they hit a light, they may go upstairs, or they may avoid stairs, or, you know, King Street, they may come across Victoria instead of going to King, through King, they may go off Victoria and through York. So there are, we've seen some of the driver habits change with the bridge closing, so we suspect that we somewhat like that or reduce.
And just one more question. That the consideration of going onto private property, I was wondering if you could expand on that, why we're excluding that? And like, is, is there an agreement with the landlord to use that property?
We, we have an agreement in place to reroute the services on private property, and that's being done partially underground, but then overland. But to put it in a pedestrian access, we'd have to actually construct apartments for the temporary bridge, and now you're into the brook area where, which is susceptible to erosion, which I prefer to stay away from that situation to, because I think it will only get worse given the amount of rain we're having this year.
Councilor Kaufman?
Would it be possible to time the lights so that when you're traveling northbound from the main intersection? Because I, I could see a problem, say, when Parkview gets up, and we got a lot of cars coming southbound, and there being a fairly long red light.
We'll, we'll try to, will probably take some time to, to tinker with the timing to make sure kind of, it, it make, make sure it fits or suits the traffic flow that's on King Street. To get it right for school in versus school out, it's, it may be difficult, but we'll do our best to, to time it appropriately.
That was my question too.
Just, so we're responsible for the pedestrian portion on the rebuild, right?
Correct.
So why don't we just get like a three-lane bridge?
Block out one lane?
No comment at this time here.
You're, you're a little sneaky.
What's the chance of them watching this right now?
My understanding, it's already been designed, and we're, and we're expecting that. The last conversation with Department of, of Scottish Public Works is that it's anticipated the new bridge will begin next, next fall, or the work will begin next fall.
Okay.
So the estimate for that was given of seventy-five thousand was from staff for the temporary, whatever option was given was based on the fact that at least the town of Bridgewater will be responsible for, for one year. And then after that, hopefully, we can work with the, you know, Scottish Public Works to either continue that temporary option through, through them or something else.
We, yeah, we had a meeting with RMLA this morning and discussed how, discussed how vital it is that this, this bridge happening quickly. So even that, I think, the original playhouse is for design next year and then installation the year after, and they're moving it forward a little quicker for us. But, I mean, we, we don't want to be two years with these lights. You know, the better option is obviously the bridge, but more importantly, we have our, or not more important, but also as importantly is we have these services that are now not running in a permanent fashion, and that is less than ideal.
Yep.
And so that we express to the province, like, we have all this development, we have the need to move water around, and we shouldn't be moving water around for that long temporary situation. Hopefully, it is sooner as opposed to later. Other questions? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Tanner?
I have the town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the unbudget expenditure for works you worked required in landing temporary pedestrian crossing on Vino Bridge okay on King Street. That estimated cost of seventy-five thousand dollars net HST, with the final cost to fund from the designated operating reserve, and that council authorizes alternative procurement for the same work pursuant to section eighteen point two A of policy seventy-nine, purchasing and tendering.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Kaufman. Further questions? If none of those in favor? Dis opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Recall, at the August fourteenth meeting, we gave notice for some amendments and amended policies, and so we're going to discuss that now. So pension plan group RSP and some repeal of some policies and asset retirement policy. See, I'm doing this to give you time and water. Good thing it wasn't just like we're.
Strategic, you're getting speed very well.
There you go.
All right. So we're at one report, but quite a lot of information there, so I'll just try to go through them as plainly as possible. So every now and then we look at our policies and go, hmm, we need to tweak that because that just doesn't make sense anymore, and this is a report based on that information. So the first one relates to our pension policy, which was originally approved in nineteen ninety-seven and only had one small amendment sent in two thousand and two. So, so that's, you know, quite a while ago. And so a lot of it was housekeeping. The percentages contributed to the pension plan were incorrect. The name of the PANS pension plan had changed years ago, so a lot of the updating was related to that. However, we did do some changes to the pension plan as part of kind of our, our due diligence and our responsibility. The town as an employer, we have to make. and our responsibility, the town as an employer, we have to make sure the staff have acceptable investments to invest in and things like that. So some of the things, and I think this was discussed with council a while back, but we added some options to the pension plan to give people less, so their plans are self-directed, so they get to choose their risk level and so on. But we did add an option for them to look at what their retirement date was, and the plan would automatically adjust their investments based on their future retirement date, so if they start with the town at thirty years old, the expectation is your work to sixty-five, so it invests your pension money space on that ultimate retirement date. So we did add that, but that wasn't kind of covered in the policy, so we just made some changes to accommodate that. And the only other major housekeeping one is that we actually specified who the plan provider was by name of the company in the plan, which didn't seem appropriate, and so we've changed all references to the plan provider as opposed to naming of a specific organization. So that's everything on the pension one, unless anyone has any questions about that policy specifically. Okay. The next one relates to, it was originally called use of town-owned vehicles, and so this policy existed within our non-union policies, so it didn't necessarily apply to all staff, just from the perspective of it existing within the non-union personnel policy. So we will be suggesting that that section of that policy be repealed in this added as a branding policy, so that it applies to all staff. There's a couple of things that triggered the need to change that, and one of them was that our insurer has been asking for more and more information on our employees, drivers' abstracts, whereas they might be focused on a specific group like transit, they've now changed their focus to wanting to know a lot of information about all of our drivers, of all of our equipment. And the policy also specifically just addressed things that we owned, but lots of times, we rent, lease vehicles and equipment, so just kind of updating the policy to kind of cover all the scenarios, so that our insurer is happy that we kind of covered all our bases, and kind of updated it for things like, the policy was old, it didn't really deal with use of a cellphone while you're driving, and so it just needed some updating. So that's, for the most part, what basically everything changed in the policy, just to accommodate all those little bits, and we did review that with our insurer with regards to reporting accidents and things like that, so. So that's the next policy, that was the next one. Any questions?
We don't condone the use of, using cellphones while we're driving.
That's correct, so we now say that in our policy, as opposed to being silent on it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Councilor Colwell?
Section two point one point three refers to people driving the work cars for personal use, so the public may be interested in knowing what, under what conditions they're allowed to be driven for personal use.
Right, so...
I get into that one.
Okay, I know, you've been asked before.
Yeah, I get this a lot. So if you have a staff person who's on call, they still have to do their errands, but also be ready on a moment's notice. So they may be driving a town truck to go to the grocery store, I've been in the grocery store, when a public works supervisor is, I'd leave his shopping cart in the middle of the grocery store with his spouse, because he was called to an emergency. But that's, that's one, like, the main reason why they would use it for personal use, is because they have to leave on a moment's notice, and going home, just they don't have that kind of time, especially if there's a water break or something like that. So that would be the one that would come up ninety-nine percent of the time, is I get a phone call saying, I see a public works supervisor with their spouse driving around a town truck, why? And that's, that's the answer, and I would support that a hundred percent, so it's...
And the policy does indicate, and which is what we follow, that the departmental director would have to approve that employee to be having that vehicle, having access to that vehicle at home for that purpose, it's not just whatever employee felt like driving vehicle at that time.
Yeah, otherwise, it would be very rare, like, if we had a staff person who was going to a conference and taking a town vehicle, but they had to leave at five o'clock in the morning, because it was in Gate Breton, they might take that car home that night. I know there's a staff person using their town vehicle today, because they have to bring all this gear here, but they may take it home, because they don't, not going to go back to town hall at nine o'clock, I'm not saying we're here at nine o'clock, but... So little situations like that, but all with approval.
All right. And so the third policy is an accounting rule policy, basically, and it relates to asset retirement obligations, so in two weeks' time, when I present the financial statements to you, I'm going to talk to you again about asset retirement obligation. But this, this policy just kind of completes the circle on new accounting policy that we have to adopt. All municipalities in Nova Scotia have to adopt this as of April one, twenty twenty-two, so all, they're all going through the same process, but basically, where there's a legal obligation for us to incur a cost to remove an asset at the end of its useful life, we have to acknowledge that cost in today's dollars, even if it's going to happen in twenty years' time. So if there's asbestos floor tiles, asbestos ceiling tiles, we have a radio tower that at the end of its useful life, we can't just let it crumble, we actually have to dismantle it and dispose of that, so anything, but there has to be a legal obligation to do that. So asbestos, for one, is covered on the Occupational Health and Safety Act, actually requires the employer to know what to do with the asbestos, and it would have to be removed from the building prior to the building being torn down, for example. And so we have to kind of estimate how much life is left of the assets that might have asbestos, and so on. So that's part of the process we're going through for year-end, but this policy just kind of puts it in writing, much the same as we've been dealing with our asset management plan, and putting some policies and procedures in place around asset management, which says we're going to long-term plan for when assets need to be replaced. This is not dissimilar, we're just, the timing of this was needed before that, otherwise asset retirement obligation really would have formed prior to our managing our assets, so we not only know when we need to replace it, but what cost there is to dispose of it when we're done. So, most of it relates to assets constructed before the nineteen eighties, when asbestos was kind of used in all kinds of things, lead paint, thus primarily the types of assets the town in particular has, but waste sites, landfills, things like that, require a whole new copulation this year for entities with their own vehicle. We just don't have one.
Any questions, Councilor Tanner?
I found it somewhat disheartening that you had to actually put in a policy about using cellphones, given cellphones are illegal, using a cellphone in a vehicle, so I'm curious if vaping is allowed in town vehicles. Would that follow the smoking?
I don't know if it follows the smoking.
Yeah, I have to check, like, because it's...
It will be now.
Just curious.
That's a good question.
We do, just on the cellphone thing, there is a safe work, safe operating, or standard operating procedures, like that, that's state, you can't use a cellphone, you might not have it in the travel policy, but there is...
The cellphone part is in the policy, I just don't know with the vaping, because...
Yeah, I don't know with that.
Curious, okay.
What is it in, like, you can't smoke in a car if there's a child in the car?
There's more to it.
But can you, but the motor vehicle act, you can't do that, can you vape in a car with a child in the car? I don't know what, I don't know what the rules are. It's just, if you want that amended, we should be, then do that, I would support that. Anyway, any questions, Councilor Darber?
Just a couple, this is off the wall. Do we ever check on employees, make sure they have valid motor vehicle license?
So that's what's part of this policy, actually allows us, so allows us to go through the process, or it's the starting point in obtaining a driver's abstract, so what we will eventually get to with this policy being in place, is that once a year, we'll send our list of employees who can drive town vehicles, and we'll send that off to Access Nova Scotia, and they'll send us back the driver's abstracts for everybody on that list, and we'll just do it every year. Be slight cost to that, but it'll just be within operating budgets. Currently, our insurer is in the process of obtaining a copy of the driver's license of everyone who drives, so we've been collecting those, I think we might finally have all of them. It's a big process to get a photocopy of everybody's driver's license, so that's what the insurer is asking for, because ultimately, they want to probably do some checks on their end, but the driver's abstracts will cover both the town from a knowing perspective. The policy always required staff to self-report, and said that we may obtain an abstract, but in this case, we actually wish to obtain those abstracts on an annual basis, so this is a starting point of getting there. We've also put together some documents as part of kind of the changes to the policy that will roll out, that are, what happens if you get in an accident, like, stay calm, take a picture, you know, all those, you know, call nine-one-one or your supervisor, so just a very simple process, because when staff get in those situations, it can be stressful, so we just, those will be added to the vehicles, some accident reporting form updates and things like that, that we need to displace to get those next steps done, but certainly, the driver's abstracts are a piece that we are going to look at.
Okay, good question. Other questions? Did you have anything else?
No, that's everything.
So we've got three motions for us to go through, someone prepared to make the first one, Councilor Darber, thank you.
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve new policy fifty-five, pension plan in group, RSP, statement of investment policy and procedures, and hereby repeal the former policy fifty-five, pension plan in group, RSP, statement of investment policy and procedures, approved February twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-seven, with amendments up to and including November twenty-fifth, two thousand and two, as presented in document number twenty-three dash one-one-six, effective immediately.
Thank you, second by Councilor Colwell, further discussion? None, all is in favor? As opposed, motion is carried. Someone prepared to make the next motion on asset retirement obligation? Councilor Colwell?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve policy one-one-four, asset retirement obligation, as presented in document twenty-three dash one-one-six, effective immediately.
Thank you, second by Councilor Colwell, all is in favor? As opposed, motion is carried, and the last one, of town-owned vehicles, someone prepared to make that motion, Councilor Colwell, thank you.
Excuse me, I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, one, approve policy one-one-six, use of town-owned vehicles, and two, repeal section eight point eight, use of town-owned vehicles in the Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual for Non-Union Employees, as presented in document number two-three dash one-one-six, effective immediately.
Second by Councilor Tanner, all those in favor? As opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Now to ten point three, the second and final reading for tax exemption, chapter one-eighty-four for the John Howard Society of Nova Scotia.
So on August fourteenth, at the council meeting, council conducted first reading of amendments to chapter one-eighty-four, the tax exemption bylaw for non-private organizations to enable six-twenty-nine King Street to remain on the listed eligible properties for full tax exemption. Six-twenty-nine has, it has been on the list, it however had the previous owner notice, and when the use ceased and the property was put up for sale, the John Howard Society purchased the property. They then contacted the town and requested that they remain on the list for full property tax exemption. Council's bylaw sets out the criteria that is required to be met in order to qualify for consideration for tax exemption, and there's criteria for both full tax exemption and partial tax exemption. So partial tax exemption would bring it down from commercial to residential, and full would exempt the full value, so there would be zero value. For full tax exemption, the value based on the twenty-two twenty-three assessment rule, twenty-three twenty-four, would be twelve thousand five hundred dollars and nine cents, so that's what the total tax bill would have amounted to. The previous owners receive the exemption for the interim tax bill in the amount of six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and forty-six cents, so the final invoice would, their tax bill would be six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and forty-six cents, and that's what the exemption would apply to. The bylaw sets out, as I say, the criteria of which the use does meet. For full exemption, the criteria is based on those selected occupants would deliver a service otherwise offered by the municipality, or a service not likely to be offered by the town, but is supported by the town as a priority community need. So housing has been identified as a priority community, and this would be transition housing and supportive assistance, as well, and maybe a drop-in center provided in the property as well. Presently, the building is under renovation to have the use ready for occupancy. They anticipate that it would be beginning of October, that it would be occupied, and when we had originally presented this to council, we discussed making the tax exemption conditional upon occupancy by October first. Recent contact with the owner, they're targeting that date, they're just not too sure they get there. So in discussing this with our accounts receivable for tax collection, Nancy advised that if there was no date, and then motion essentially had that when occupied, so the exemption would become effective on the date it's occupied, by the use that they state, which is the transitional housing and the drop-in center, and supportive assistance, then they would basically adjust the billing, so that if they pay taxes for too much, say, we're going to remember, and then get rid of it for the rest. So that's how we could do that without tying it to a specific date, and enable the amendment to the bylaw to occur as well. So if council's agreeable, what would be in order to make the amendments, which is essentially just to note the new ownership for six-twenty-nine, and to keep it on the full exemption list under the, on chapter one-eighty-four, just to conduct second and final reading of the amendments.
Any questions from council?
I would, yes, thank you. I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the second and final reading of the proposed amendment to chapter one-eighty-four, tax exemption bylaw, to grant full tax exemption provided for in section three of chapter one-eighty-four, to the property six-twenty-nine King Street, provided the building is occupied as a drop-in center and transition housing, as presented in document number twenty-three dash one-one-seven, and authorize staff to publish all, public notices or suit of section one-sixty-eight of Municipal Government Act.
Thank you, second by, it's a race, Councilor Colwell. Further discussion? Carry none, all is in favor? As opposed, motion is carried. Are done, we're done doing business, so we have the NSFM Fall Conference and AGM coming up, and for the, of course, if you recall, for the NSFM and the FCM conferences, because they're voting delegates, council must approve who is a voting delegate, so we have to make a motion and see who's going. I know that Deputy Mayor Fugier would like to go, and I will be going, I don't know if anyone else from council is planning on attending, yes? This would be the one to, the spring and the fall, this is the AGM, so this is, this is the one that is, got a little bit more meat on the bones for the topics. You know, the keynote speaker is David Miller, who we'll all be familiar with, he spoke, of course, at our very first sustainability event, way back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, two thousand and nine, I think, because you were on council, right? Yeah, so it's two thousand and nine, and we've been kind of linked as a community ever since, so that's, that's quite, really quite interesting. Is anyone else interested in going to Halifax?
I'm interested.
Councilor Colwell? Oh, okay. So Deputy Mayor Fugier did say, like, if we, if we have more people than we are prepared to send, that she would step away, but where it's, usually, our policy is when it's in Halifax, we send as many as we can, because it's, you know, there's no flights, and there's, you know, the cost is significantly less than the FCM, which is in Canada, so. So it's myself, Councilor Dalton, Councilor Colwell, Deputy Mayor Fugier, said everybody. So is someone prepared to make a motion to appoint those to the... Councilor Colwell?
I'll try. I move that council, the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, appoint Mayor David Mitch... appoint Mayor David Mitchell, Deputy Mayor Cheryl Fugier, Councillor Stacey Caldwell, and Councillor Jennifer McDonald as delegates for the 2023 NSFM Fall Conference and approve registration and other reasonable associated expenses.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Tanner. Further discussion? Here are none? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. And members of the community that are working on those? Do you need to look at those? All right, someone's going to reach out to you, but making those arrangements for you. Okay. This will be your first NSFM, correct? So this will be, this will be good. My eyes try to light fire, isn't it? So it'll be very, I think you'll find quite a form. That's all I can say. All right, next one. This is the first here. Relocating Legion Request to Relocate Armored Personnel Carrier to Veterans Memorial Park.
I have to clear a conflict of interest in the number of legions, so I really shouldn't private shit up.
Well, you will receive no financial gain personally.
I just wanted to make it clear what's required.
Yeah, I, it's whatever you're personally comfortable with, but there's no, you're not gaining any advantage by, by, well, the elements. Unless you are going to personally be paid to drag the carrier forward. But then I'm being paid to do that.
Okay, so this is a request to relocate the armored personnel carrier that's at the rear of the Legion parking lot now to Veterans Memorial Park. There is a lease agreement for space at Veterans Memorial Park or the designated area with the Legion. And any, any change in use or activity occurs there, that's outside of the normal wire receiving of the council. So this is why this request is there. And this is proposed to be moved by Legion. And we have brought it to council for council's agreement with respects to its relocation. And the lease agreement deals with all of the issues related to identities or liability and those types of things.
Any questions? Did any make sense to?
Yeah, we're actually going to put a pad in there and have it moved and placed on the pad and actually going to paint it white, peacekeepers colors. It's down there on the corner that nobody can see. It's been there since the early 80s. And it's an important piece of history for the Legion. And we only thought it was fit that it should be over there where people walk in and apparently see it. So we'll give some attention and that's why we built the building to try and get this for.
Councilor Cawton?
Just wondering if there's a concern of people climbing on the vehicle or any vandalism or?
That's why the insurance requirements, well, for, and so that's brought our management meeting about concern over little ones climbing in and hanging out and doing that type of thing. And that's why these transfer requirements would be there to ensure that the town would not be liable. The Legion may want to consider some type of barrier that prevents children from getting under and that may come over time as you're observing.
Put a sign like that though, wait, Halifax. Highly effective.
It is all welded shut, so nobody can get into it. It's set over there since the 80s and.
Probably a good time for my parents that they're responsible for their children.
Or put a sign on it.
And that's all going to be done before, before this year's?
I'm not sure it can be now. We're reaching out to try and get the equipment heavy enough to move that. It's fairly heavy, so we.
The weather's not overly kind.
But the flights kind of put the base in for us over there, slant the foot on, so it will be done in perfection.
Excellent. Any other questions?
The doors be welded shut, it's going to be hard to steer it a little bit over.
I know, but actually, why didn't they come here and for the rest of council? We was hoping that it was supposed to be operational. That's what we were told. But once they got there, took the motor out and took everything off it and they all did things shut. So it couldn't, it really didn't turn out to be what the Legion expected it would be. And we can't even move that if they're going through the many commands and getting approval to do. We try to get away all the time.
Is someone prepared to make a motion?
Councilor Caldwell? Move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, approve the request of the Royal Canadian Legion and allow the relocation of the armored personnel carrier to Veterans Memorial Park, located on the corner of Dorcan and Victoria Road.
Seconded by Councilor McDonald. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next is 11.3, giving notice for public participat- no, that's not public participation meeting, PPM amendments. Personnel. That salary has been decreed to create a grade 6A in salary range. I've read all that the first time, if like students on my line. I don't think you can hire grade six students. But I don't know, like summer camp, I don't know what it was. Did you want to just talk quickly to that?
Just quickly to it. These are proposed amendments that would reflect, I guess, the need to adapt our policy to changing labor markets as well as changes in positions that may require greater skill and responsibility than initially ranked. So we've identified the need to look at a new ban, which would be not a director ban, but not the manager and manager in between the two, and look at the amendments just so that we essentially broke up scoring on a kind of a salary range that would reflect what is required to remain competitive as an employer and to recognize those positions that, as I say, have changed over time, that require higher skill or educational requirements or certifications, and where the market has dictated that we have to adapt our ranges to in order to retain or attract.
So that'll be, that'll be coming back to the September 25th meeting. So again, for the public, this is us giving notice that this topic is coming back in a future meeting. And that future meeting is our next one, which may be at Town Hall, may be here, but it'd be, no matter what, it'd be on the 25th of September. So is someone prepared to make a motion with notice? Councilor Caldwell?
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, give notice that at the September 25, 2023 council meeting, council will consider for approval amendments to the Personnel Policy, Article 7, Salary Administration, to create a grade 6A with and accompanying, accompanying salary range as set forth in the proposed amendments contained in document number 23-121.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Tanner. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item is a letter from MODL, request for consideration for the, this is timely, for the Remo budget allocation and that we place any unspent Remo funds at the end of each fiscal year, that they actually remain with Remo and be placed in reserve for emergency spending. So we discussed that at the Remo meeting and we all, we all thought it was a good idea to keep those funds there in reserve. But this is, MODL has sent a formal letter with that request. I don't know, Councilor Thorburn, as a member of that, if you wanted to elaborate?
Yeah, especially with the emergency we can have and there's been a lot of requests for funds from Remo. And this will allow us to keep that fund as a contingency plan to get at least to a certain limit and rather than come back to us. It won't be used unless there's reason to use it. So it's not going to be used unless it's absolutely necessary and approved by Remo Committee as a whole.
Any other questions on that? It's the fund you hope you never use, Councilor Cawton?
Ballpark, like how much are we talking here?
It's not a lot, maybe about $5,000, $10,000. The Remo budget's small, it's mainly salaries. And so it's just a small amount that would potentially be left over.
And if we were accepting it, where would it go? Where would it end up upon?
The District of Lunenburg maintains Remo budget, so they'd have to set up a reserve fund there that would note each unit's, I guess, percentage of that, of that fund.
Essentially, a lot of the surplus would come from not having the emergencies we thought we were going to have, which would, that's a good thing, which would leave us, leave us in a surplus position. But to Councilor Thorburn's point, if we had a larger emergency, then that would be the first amount of money they tap into. But eventually, they'd come to the councils anyway, if we needed more, yes.
Yeah, and that motion was passed at Remo. So Lunenburg, Chester, MODL, Bridgewater, and all, they all agreed to support this motion. So it's not that we're doing something on our own.
Yeah, the whole committee. Yeah, we just ratified it. Any other questions on that? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Cawton?
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, approve the recommendation of the Regional Emergency Management Organization, Remo Advisory Committee, to place any unspent Remo funds at the end of each fiscal year, remain with Remo and be placed in a reserve for emergency spending.
Seconded by Councilor McDonald. Further discussion? There's none? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Probably a good time to remind folks to follow the Remo, Lunenburg County Remo social media feeds and download the Town of Bridgewater app, especially if we have a big storm and we have some road closures or transit detours or whatever it is. You know, even thinking of that Harvest Moon event, if there's road closures and traffic detours, that all shows up on the app, which is free. But certainly in this season, hurricane season, I would be following the social media feeds of Remo. And there's also lots of good information, like how to prepare an emergency kit and things like that. So a little plug for Remo and Angela who does an amazing job. 11.5 are the briefing notes from our discussion session from the August 8th meeting. So we had a member from Social Open Doors Association come to council. We had a good long discussion on their project and where they're at. And so all that information is in our briefing notes, which is also in the agenda packages, which are on the town's website. So you can refer to those at any time. Our next item is tender 23-06E, supply of 2023 or newer five-ton truck.
I guess I should have sat on the side. So part of the 2023-24 budget was the purchase of a new five-ton truck. It was pre-approved to do earlier in the season. However, there wasn't a lot of interest at that time because of price fluctuations and long delivery delays. So staff did issue a tender in August, as well as because of the ongoing concerns about delivery issues and price, we actually did a provisional price for a second identical truck, which is part of the proposed 10-year capital plan for '24-'25. Because we expect those delivery delays and the price only did higher. So we did issue the tender in August with five tender packages taken out. Only one received, unfortunately. But thankfully, we have one these days. So we did look at the submission, of course, based on the price, the schedule, compliance with specifications. The truck did meet our specifications, but they did note that, one, it exceeded our project budget as well as they couldn't commit to delivery date. Verbally, they told us, you probably won't see that truck until sometime in the spring of 2024, which validated our concerns for the additional truck. It is imperative, these trucks are imperative, to maintain our level of service for both summer and winter maintenance. So it is for that reason that staff would make two recommendations. One, to purchase the 2025 International HV607 five-ton truck, complete with provisional item, extended warranty of 60 months or 160,000 kilometers from Silver's Garage for a total price of $303,655.71, including HST, $275,365.55, net HST, excluding trade-in, with an over-budget amount of $27,971.55, including HST, or $25,365.55, net HST, and this being funded by the Undesignated Operating Reserve. I should note that the reason why we excluded the trade-in, in case there is probably a question on that one, is because we still are reviewing our fleet requirements. And given the long delay, we want to keep the vehicles for not just the longest we need, but we'd like to keep them until we have both vehicles in place, seeing what our resources, our continued needs, we expect to grow. And given the value, they only offer $7,000 for the, with the overall grand scheme of things. Number two, pre-approve the purchase of a second identical truck as part of the '24-'25 budget to maintain essential equipment replacement schedule and for the total price, for the same price, $303,655.71, including HST, or $275,365.55, net HST. Thank you.
Any questions on those? Councilor Thorburn?
Not a question, but a comment. It makes sense to order two of them now? Next year, we'd be in the same boat and the price would probably be up fair enough more.
It's the, certainly the budget was higher than, we, at the time of budgeting or pre-planning for this year's capital budget, we already bumped up, thinking that we would be able to achieve or receive a truck for this amount, but unfortunately, we could not. So we will use this price going forward as a new benchmark for all the trucks beyond '24 or '25.
I was going to say something similar. It makes sense to buy both if, otherwise in the spring, we're just going to have to do this again. You may not get a bidder and we're going to have to wait a couple of years for a truck. And it's not going to get cheaper, so I think it's smart. Any other questions on that? Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Thorburn?
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, approve the recommendation of the Engineering Department and award truck tender 23-06E, supply of a 2023 or newer five-ton truck to Silver's Garage, 2008 Limited, for the purchase of a 2025 International HV607 five-ton truck, complete with provisional items, extended warranty of 60 months or 160,000 kilometers, $2787, plus HST for a total price of $303,655.71, including HST, $275,365.55, net HST, excluding trade-in, with an over-budget amount of $27,971.55, including HST, $25,365.55, HST, being funded from the Undesignated Operating Reserve.
Seconded by Councilor Tanner. Further discussion? Here are none? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Someone like to make the motion for the second truck? Councilor Caldwell, thank you.
Move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, pre-approve the purchase of a second identical truck as part of the 2024-25 budget to maintain the essential equipment replacement schedule for a total price of $303,655.71, including HST, $275,365.55, net HST, to be purchased from Silver's Garage, 2008 Limited, as per the award of tender 23-06E, supply of a 2023 or new five-ton truck.
And seconded, Councilor Tanner. I'm just laughing because of our discussion before the meeting. You'll ask the next week. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. I sympathize very much. Just the fact we're not, like, using little screens. Like, there was a time where, like, it was in fashion, had the small computer screen, and now we all want the big computer screen. I'm lost with it. Our next one is RFP 2023-05, Engineering Services for the Waste Water Treatment Plant Condition Assessment.
Thank you. This motion is a little easier than the last one. We were fairly long, sorry.
No worries.
So as part of the 23-24 capital budget, council approved the Waste Water Treatment Plan Assessment, the scope of which is to look at the Waste Water Treatment Plan as a whole, the building envelope in and all the associated equipment and serve process equipment it contains, as well as reviewing the critical components of the collection system with hopes to have a 20- with hopes to have a 20-year replacement strategy for all critical infrastructure at the Wastewater Treatment Plant and the pump stations. That would incorporate town growth, compliance with environmental regulations and requirements as well as operating permit and dealing with infiltration, inflow and infiltration. On August, in August, we issued the RFP, which closed, we received two bids, which were then, the certificate is attached. They were, those bids were evaluated by the Engineering Department. The evaluation material is similar to what we normally see for a request for proposals, reviewing the executive summary, qualifications, references, their scope, approach, methodology, and price. It should be noted that in order to evaluate their non-technical or price score, they have to minimum receive a minimum bid of 75 points. In this case, C B C L is the only bid that received the minimum, above the minimum score and therefore is the only compliant bidder. The approved budget for this project is $120,000 net HST. So the additional funds, if approved, would, from the wastewater reserves, estimated $50,019.45, would be required to complete the forward board. We understand that it is certainly over budget and council could choose not to award, but understanding that we do not anticipate the consultant pool to increase nor the price to, I guess, decrease if we were to go back out to market. So in that case, staff would respectfully recommend that the request for proposals for Engineering Services, RFP 2023-5, Wastewater Treatment Plant Condition Assessment Report be awarded to C B C L Limited for an estimated cost of $147,843, plus HST, or $170,000, sorry, $170,019.45 net HST, using wastewater reserve funds for the budget overage.
Thank you. Questions from Counsel Tanner?
Matt, I assume as part of it, it said it would help you predict costs and so on and create a 20-year replacement. Will they also give you estimated values of that, those replacement pieces? Is that a part of it?
Yes, they will be looking at the full life cycle of existing equipment, when these were replaced and the cost to replace it at that time.
And would they also then perhaps give you a second opinion of saying, well, it might just be easier to build a new facility? Like would they, if you start seeing this map of escalating costs and it's 20-year cycle, obviously, then would they also give you that opinion?
They are looking at alternative tech or alternative process equipment as well as part of that.
Right, okay, nice.
It's not necessarily the building, but.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Different ways to do it using the same.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Good questions. And other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Tanner?
Member of the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommendation of the Engineering Department and award the request for proposal for Engineering Services, RFP 2023-05-WWTP, Condition Assessment Report to C B C L Limited for an estimated cost of $147,843, plus HST, $170,019.45 net HST, using wastewater reserve funds for the budget overage.
Thank you, seconded by Counsel Thorburn. All those in favor? Motion is carried.
Scared to see this.
Thank you very much. You have good information to have, as we have. It's not going to be, not going to be all lollipops and roses with that one. All right, number 11.8, application to purchase land lot 102 Glen Allen Drive, Housing Trust of Nova Scotia.
Okay, so we've had a, received an application to acquire lot 102, which is technically lot 200, but we've been calling it lot 102 for so long that we're just going to keep calling it that for now, purposes of this. The proposal is to purchase the property for $385,000. So lot 102 has a road frontage of 395, 396 feet and an area of 58,706 square feet. An appraisal was done on land recently in Glen Allen, land that the town owns, which is up and behind that map. That was completed by Altus Group. And that appraisal provided a value of $60,000 for a residential lot, which would have an area of 9100 square feet or 655 per square foot. So when you take that value and you apply that to lot 102, you come up with a value of $384,000. So the offer price does meet marketish in terms of having an appraisal that supports or backs that up. And therefore, staff can recommend to council or advise council that that test required under the Municipal Government Act for market value has been met and that is what is being offered. The proposed development is to look at placing 20 to 24 affordable housing units for health care workers on the site. The lot presently is zoned neighborhood commercial. And as council is aware from previous proposals, we do require the zoning change on that property in order to enable the affordable modular units to be placed on that lot. The agreement itself has a few conditions that are required to be met prior to the sale actually going through. So therefore, once all those conditions are met, the property, and assuming they are met, the property would be transferred and the sale completed. So the primary conditions are that there would have to be an amendment to the planning strategy and land use bylaw that would enable the development of 20 to 24 modular housing units on this lot. And as noted, presently, the zoning does not enable more than 14 units right now. So they require the density, given the value of the lot. Council had already given direction to staff to commence that some time ago. So you'll note that the motion is suggesting that you direct staff to recommence that process because it was kind of moved down on the list of priorities. There's the Housing Trust Board approval that's required. Council normally requires a buyback agreement. If there's any funding that's provided for this project provincially, as you know, they typically like to put a lien on the property, so it may be coming back. And we certainly did highlight that. The buyback agreement would be subservient to any provincial lien that may be on the property. That's the way they like that, given the amount of their financial commitment. They want the first charge or first lien. The intention of the buyback agreement is, in this case, from the town's perspective, is not an affordable housing buyback agreement that we'd be looking at. It's one to ensure that the development occurs. So it's about time limits. And that's typically what we look for when we're selling land at market value, is that the land doesn't just sit, that a development occurs.
But the province would be ensuring there's affordable housing.
Yeah, any type of funding that may be, may be provided and that's really up to the Housing Trust to secure. But any type of funding that may be provided with, with conditions that get attached to the property to ensure it's affordable. So given the conditions, and the primary one that takes the longest amount of time is the NPS and I B M that would be required to facilitate the development, the proposed due diligence date would be February 28th. So a bit of a longer closing period, but you can't really satisfy that condition until council goes through the process of amendment, so that's why. And then closing would occur 30 days after that date. Any proceeds from the sale of land is required by the Municipal Government Act to be placed in a capital reserve fund. And in this case, because we are selling directly, there are no real estate brokerage commissions applying to this lot. Our expenses would be legal costs associated with the transfer and of course, staff time in doing the M M S. And that's basically it. So what is required at this point is for council to authorize the execution of an agreement of purchase and sale and related buyback agreement for the property sale for the value of $385,000. And then we will work through the conditions.
Questions from council? We've discussed this before. Their turnaround time is quite quick as well because they are modular. So that's good news as well. So the goal is affordable housing and the need is quick. And this achieves, if this all goes according to plan, this achieves both. So that's good. Any other questions, Counsel Caldwell?
This is the same site that had been proposed for affordable housing from Social Open Doors Association, correct?
That's correct.
So is there, has S O D A been informed of this application? And will staff work with S O D A to try and find a suitable alternative site?
So S O D A is aware of that. That direct communication has been made. We're also, staff are working with S O D A right now to try to establish partnerships with other organizations that can assist them in delivering affordable housing through the construction process. Because that seems to be some of the area that needed some focus or attention is kind of getting through that planning and that whole construction piece of it, where their specialty is more the wraparound and the support piece of it. And we are looking to try to connect that where there's, you know, available land, land that may be available in the community to pursue affordable housing. So we have enough developments that oppose it and maybe there's opportunities there. But those are discussions that were, that are ongoing.
So that's the one that really interests me is not, not just, yes, staff are working with them for other land that's available, but to the C A O's point, connecting them with developers who have approached us on a number of parcels to say, we'd like to put affordable housing here. While linking them as developers with S O D A is, to me, it seems like a great win-win for them so that S O D A can articulate the needs of the community because they're the ones on the ground that know exactly what they need with a developer who might be, who knows, from the city, who's like, I just want to do this project. And then at least if S O D A's involved, so I'm excited by that. And also, the Housing Trust did speak to S O D A as well. So we've had a conversation with them and so has the Housing Trust. So this is not a surprise to them. And so just continue to work with them. Other questions? Counsel Thorburn?
Will we be charging taxes on this piece of property? So the town will reclaim property tax?
Unless there's, there's nothing in this agreement that deals with a request to exempt the property from property tax. So it'd be applied just like in the other property?
Other questions, Counsel Tanner?
They seem to have quite aggressive growth strategy over the next couple of years. Was there any indication that they're looking for more for our region at all?
I'm not really able to speak to that. Like I'm not sure what their strategy is.
That sounds a little suspicious.
They were a big, big growing urban center.
I get the impression they want one in all the areas. And I feel like there's going to be a second, a second go around from what I'm seeing. Great question. Now, other questions? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Thorburn?
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater accept the offer of $385,000 for lot 102 Glen Allen Drive, P I D 60658580, and authorize staff to execute an agreement of purchase and sale and subsequently buyback agreement for the property with the Housing Trust of Nova Scotia. Buyback agreement terms to require commencement of construction on lot 102 within 24 months from closing date and completion of pros 20 to 24 units within 72 months of the closing date. Father, that council direct staff to recommence the planning analysis and public consultation process for redesignation and rezoning of the property from neighborhood commercial C7 to comprehensive residential is previously directed by council.
Seconded by Counsel Cogman. I feel like I was whining though. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Our building permit report is there for August 2023. Just a reminder for the public that all the documents that we have in front of us are available on the town's website under council agenda. We don't have anything extra. It's all, it's all there. Although if you download it, it's one, one big document on the website. But it's all there, including the building permit report. So we are close to being as busy as our busiest year. And as we heard from Nick Brown earlier, that creates some challenges. But we continue to be very, very busy. So that's there. And also, we have the Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program Monthly Report. I'll just give a little plug to them. So every Thursday from October 12th to November 16th, from 1:00 to 3:30 p.m. at the, our health center in Chester is the Senior Safety Academy. So they'll have, so just a drop-in. So they'll have experts from the R C P, legal aid lawyers, Alzheimer's Society, talking about frauds and scam prevention, will and power of attorney, mental health, emergency preparedness and more. So that is the Senior Safety Academy in Chester, starting on October 12th, every Thursday afternoon. So check that out. And that is the end of our agenda. We do have an in-camera meeting under Section 222 E under the M G A for contract negotiations following this. Otherwise, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Counsel Thorburn, seconded by Counsel Tanner. We are adjourned.